Good evening and welcome to the Stanley County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on February the 6th, 2012. We appreciate your interest in what's going on in Stanley County and your attendance tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order and to ask Vice Chairman McIntyre if he would provide our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Dear Father, I come to you tonight to ask your blessings upon our nation. Our nation was founded on Christian principles. Dear Father, there are factions out there right now trying to tear that down and throw it away. We ask that you lead and guide our leaders and we ask that you lead and guide future leaders that they may have the courage and the wisdom to stand up for what's right and just for our nation. Especially ask your blessings on this meeting tonight. As we conduct our business for Stanley County, we make decisions that will be for the best of the citizens and that will be pleasing to you. We ask these things in Christ's name for his sake. Amen.
Okay, thank you. And first, I don't believe we have any adjustments to the agenda. Am I correct in that thought, fellow commissioners? Not hearing any. We will approve the agenda or entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move for the motion to approve as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, our first item on the agenda tonight is a proclamation, consider a proclamation declaring the week of February 5th through 11th, 2012, as FBLA/PBL Week. And I understand we have a presenter tonight, Brandon Harkey, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, if you will, come to the podium and we'd be happy to hear from you. Introduce yourself with, as far as the organization you're with and anyone that is with you tonight as well, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. It's a pleasure to meet everyone Stanley County Commissioners. Throughout the country, February 5th through the 12th, colleges are celebrating National Phi Beta Lambda Week. I am Brandon Harkey, current president of the Stanley Community College Phi Beta Lambda Chapter. We are excited to be promoting the advantage of a PBL membership with you on campus. For me from Stanley Community College tonight is April Martin, Joseph Fraley, Erica Tindall, Jessica Burnett, Jerry Nestor, and Garrett Foster. They are all a part of our Stanley Community College Chapter. Phi Beta Lambda is a national organization for college students and business and business-related curriculums and majors. The Stanley Community College Chapter is proud to have been named the National Gold Seal Chapter for 2010 through 2011, and we are aiming to repeat this feat this year. Pfeiffer University is proud to be home of the last two state PBL Presidents, Mr. John Anderson the year before and the current President, Mr. Sam Miller. Both groups are looking forward to our State Leadership Conference this April. That will be in the Hilton and Charlotte. And attending the 2012 National Leadership Conference that will be held in San Antonio, Texas. Delegates from both Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer University all won competitive events at the state level and attended the National Conference in Orlando, Florida. Where a good time was had by all, we brought back several national awards to our chapter and for Stanley County. At this time, I'll turn over to our Vice President of Community Service, Ms. April Martin.
Thank you. The national theme for PBL this year is your gateway to greatness, and our chapters are working hard to make this idea a reality for our members. Among the many projects on our agendas is a group activity this weekend to raise funds for the March of Dimes. Last year, North Carolina's Phi Beta Lambda raised the second largest amount, oh, excuse me, of funds in the nation. And future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Incorporated was one of the top five contributors in the country to the March of Dimes. As we continue promoting education and business, as well as making our members more aware of the American enterprise system, we appreciate the county commissioners and other civic and government groups that are building the business foundation of Stanley County. We thank you too for recognizing National PBL Week by signing this proclamation. We will display it proudly this week as we continue our activities. Thank you.
We will also be recognizing this chapter's year's Business Person of the Year. For Stanley Community College, we are pleased to announce that Mr. Matt Smith, owner of Stanley Communications and local radio station, has received that honor. On Wednesday, we will be saluting our advisors. For Pfeiffer, the advisors are Ms. Debbie Wood and Ms. Robin Listerman. Ms. Wood is a former president of the chapter at both Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer University when she was a student. For Stanley, our advisors are Mr. Merlin Armitage, Ms. Tammy McIlwain, and our State Advisor, Mr. Dan Hazlett. Mr. Hazlett is in his 38th year as an advisor, so it's obvious our advisors feel PBL is a good way to teach and provide the skills that will make us the business, educational, civic, and governmental leaders of tomorrow. Thank you again for your interest in Phi Beta Lambda and making this National PBL Week official here in Stanley County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for being here tonight, and you may choose to be seated, but I'm going to ask if our Vice Chair, Jeanne McIntyre, will read the proclamation for our consideration.
Thank you, Chairman, Lynn Donovan. I'd like to thank Dan Hazlett, the work he's done with PBL over the years, and thank you all for your hard work. I've attended some of the conferences and have been judges in some of those events, so I know what you go through, but I just want to thank you. At this time, I would like to read the proclamation. Whereas Phi Beta Lambda and future Business Leaders of America develop competent, aggressive business leadership; whereas PBL and FBLA strengthen the confidence of students in themselves and their work; whereas PBL and FBLA encourage members in the development of individual projects which contribute to the improvement of home, business, and community; whereas PBL and FBLA develop character, prepare students for useful citizenship, and foster patriotism; whereas PBL and FBLA encourage efficient money management; whereas PBL and FBLA encourage scholarship and promote school loyalty; whereas PBL and FBLA assist students in the establishment of occupational goals; whereas PBL and FBLA facilitate the transition from school to work. Be it resolved that Stanley County, North Carolina participate in the national designation of Phi Beta Lambda and Future Business Leaders of America Week. In doing so, the Commissioners applaud the aforementioned goals and recognize the continued contributions and success of FBLA chapters at the county high schools and the Phi Beta Lambda chapters at Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer University. The Commissioners particularly recognize the Stanley Community College Chapter as it celebrates its 2011 National Gold Seal Chapter recognition and the Pfeiffer Chapter as the home, Sam Miller President of the State PBL Chapter. The Commissioners also wish all these members success as they prepare for participation in the upcoming state leadership conferences and competitive events. These chapters have conducted programs and projects that have benefited Stanley County. They have produced state and national officers and have won state and national competitive events that have brought attention to Stanley County. Most importantly, they have provided the opportunity for leadership development that has resulted in outstanding citizens and business leaders. The Commissioners congratulate Phi Beta Lambda and Future Business Leaders of America and are pleased to salute them publicly during this week of national emphasis. Thank you, and the proclamation has already been signed, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I would entertain a motion at this time that the Board of Stanley County Commissioners accept the proclamation as presented by our Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion that we accepted the proclamation as presented by the Vice Chair.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, and again, congratulations and thank you for what you're doing now and will be doing for yourselves and the country's future. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for planning and zoning. Michael Sandy, the Planning Director, is our presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you tonight is a rezoning request, ZA 11-01, Doug Rink, on behalf of Ms. Ruby Almond. It's rezoning from M1 and M1 CU to, and NRA, to M1 Light Manufacturing. Mr. Rink, respectfully request rezoning of 6.415 acres of a 22-acre tract of land from CUM1 and RA to M1, tax record number 7024. Property is located in the intersection of Wyatt Road and NC 2427. The purpose of this requested amendment is to allow the portion of the property to have zoning for business and light industrial purposes. The jointed properties are zoned RA to the south, east, and west, and general business to the north. Public utilities, including water, are provided to the property in question with sewer located to the west of NC 24, along 2427 approximately 3,000 feet. This property is not located in a regulated flood plain or watershed regulated district. Property in question is located within the Stanley County Grove area according to the Stanley County Land Use Plan. Traffic along the section of NC 2427, highways approximately 12,000 cars per day. The Plan Board forwarded this recommendation to the Commissioners with favorable recommendation and as well as accordance with the 2010 Land Use Plan. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Do any of the Commissioners have questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rink and Mr. Guy Almond's son, of Ruby Almond, is here to speak also.
Okay. As I understand it, we'll open the public hearing and allow them to speak at that time? I believe that's correct. So let me do that now. Let me open the public hearing to reconsider or to consider rezoning as described by Mr. Sandy. If you'd like to speak for or against this rezoning, come to the podium and identify yourself, if you will, and then make your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commissioners. My name is Doug Rink and I represent the petitioner. Special note, if you will, the original request was 6.4 acres. I believe you have a map that has reduced that to 1.63 acres. I should have, I believe it's, I believe you have that. I have a copy if you don't. Okay.
There's a question. You're saying the map we have says one acre plus or minus, but you're defining that more completely as 1.63 acres?
Yes, sir. There is currently 0.63 acres that falls inside the Department of Transportation right-of-way just as a consistent, contiguous measure. The effective rezoning is 1.63, the usable is one acre. Yes, sir. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this, on behalf of Ms. Almond and myself, in case you need further information.
Okay. If that's your only comment at that time, why don't we hear other speakers and then if we have questions, we'll come back to you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Again, please identify yourself when you come to the podium.
My name's Guy Almond. Ms. Ruby Almond's my mother. We've had some changes with it, and I'm going to speak for her and I got two sisters and I'm also going to speak for them because they couldn't be here tonight. And we all agree with Doug Rink, we appreciate it to go along with the rezoning. So we're all for the one-acre rezoning part. And if y'all have any questions with me, I'll try to answer them if I can.
Okay. Are there any questions of either Mr. Rink or Mr. Almond at this time? Not hearing any questions, so is there anyone else who is present to speak on this issue tonight? Again, please identify yourself when you come to the podium. Thank you.
I'm Linda Honeycutt, and my question, since the amount has been reduced, is not as strong as it was for 6-point acres, but I was opposing and not knowing what's going to be put there on the one acre, I still would like to be on record as opposing. I own the two properties, two houses, to the west of this.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else here to speak on this issue tonight? Seeing no one else, I declare the public hearing closed and would invite comments or motions by Commissioners.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This survey we have in front of us says one acre plus or minus. Was this a survey done by a surveyor or was it calculated? It says one. Normally, when I look at a plot, it says one acre, plus or minus, it means it is one acre. But you say it's 1.63 acres, and when I multiply this out, if I just square the rectangular part of the survey, it's in excess of an acre. I don't know how much is in that triangle on the southwest side, but you're asking for 1.63. That's just an interesting point to me. I've never seen that before. And number two, I was just curious why you have all the, why you're taking all the frontage on the highway for your acre, just out of curiosity.
If you will, return to the microphone to answer the question, please.
Commissioner Morton, with Ms. Almond's property, it's just unique how this, first of all, to answer your question, it was done by a surveyor. I think that, I don't know, it should be, I don't know which copy you have, but if there's a second half to this map and I have a copy here that will have his wet seal on there, so it was done by a registered land surveyor. But the uniqueness of Ms. Almond's property is that when the highway divided, when it was four-lane through there, all the DOT right-of-way fell on Ms. Almond's property. So in my discussions with Ms. Almond and drawing this survey map, when we had the, this is not a subdivision, so it's obviously a rezoning map, not a subdivision map, but the area, what I asked the surveyor to do was determine what area was up under the DOT right-of-way, and that's the 0.63. If you look, as it turns on the Wyatt Road, you'll see 0.63, and that's the part that's on the DOT, under the DOT, and then the actual usable acreage is the one acre. Now, the map is drawn so that it'll be consistent with the GIS if this zoning goes through tonight. This will be able to give the GIS department the proper boundaries to put in their system. Would that answer your question?
So the one acre is outside the right-of-way, then?
Yes, sir. It's a total of 1.63 acres.
Including the right-of-way?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
The one acre you're talking about is outside the right-of-way?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right-of-way has nothing to do with the rezoning.
Well...
No, no, the right-of-way has nothing to do with the rezoning. If it's land, you can't use it.
Right, that's what, yeah, yes, sir. I mean, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I mean, the...
I don't know if I can even, but that's...
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Are there any other questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Well, actually, it's more than 1.63 acres because you got the right-of-way on 2427. As I see the dotted line there, it looks like that's one acre.
That's all of the, that's all of the 1.63 acres.
Oh, the 0.63, okay.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Got you.
Yes, we had to identify the right-of-way.
And for those maybe who are at home trying to figure out what we're talking about, we're looking at a map. The map that's shown on the screen right now is red-hatched, but it includes some right-of-way that runs along 2427 and then turns down Wyatt Road, and what Mr. Rink is referring to is all that right-of-way constitutes 0.63 acres, and so we're looking at a different map than what's actually being shown, if you're watching this from your own television. So that's what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any more questions or would you like to make a motion at this time?
I move we approve the 1.63 acre.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Dennis, to approve rezoning on the 1.63 acres as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second from Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor of the rezoning indicate by saying aye.
Come to discussion, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there more discussion?
I would just like to make a statement for Ms. Honeycutt's benefit. If anything goes on that property, there would have to be buffers built, so that would help a little bit. Does that help any? There would have to be buffers that might help what you're talking about. Your property is to the left, is towards Charlotte off of, yeah, on the other side of Wyatt Road. Okay, thank you. That's all I had to say. I'll second the motion.
Okay, forgive me for not allowing for the discussion. Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the rezoning is approved. Are you, you're prepared now also to talk about some appointments to the Planning Board, I believe? Michael Sandy again.
Yes, sir. Thank you. appointments to the Planning Board, there's three members whose terms are expiring. Those are Sammy Estridge, Billy Franklin Lee, and Houston Clark II. Mr. Elders, Estridge has served one full term, Mr. Lee has served one full term, and Mr. Clark has served two full terms. Mr. Estridge and Mr. Lee have agreed to serve another term if appointed. Mr. Clark has served two full terms, it's not eligible for reappointment. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, again, Mister Commissioners, if you have any questions, let's address Mr. Sandy at this time, otherwise, if you'd like to make a motion, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move that we reappoint Mr. Billy Franklin Lee and that we appoint Robert Davis and Bob Loughlin Jr. to serve on the Planning Board.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McIntyre to appoint the three individuals he mentioned, Mr. Lee, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Loughlin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Dennis. Now, is there any discussion about that? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and if passes, so those will be the new appointees for the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Our next item on the agenda for tonight is to discuss our utilities. We want to consider the award for four plumbing service contracts for the 2010 Infrastructure Hookup Grant, and the presenter tonight is Donna Davis, our Utilities Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Commissioners, I have for your consideration the award of four plumbing services contracts. As we have discussed before in prior meetings, this is part of a large infrastructure hookup grant, community development block grant that was received by the county to serve low, moderate-income citizens and to assist them with connecting to the water system in Stanley County. On Thursday, January 26th, 2012, we received bids at 11:00 a.m. from plumbers who were participating or who had chosen to participate in the bid process for these particular packages. There were four packages, and we're looking at seven through 10 at this time, and we were able to open the bids in front of the plumbers, and the lowest responsive, responsible bidder in this case was Dependable Plumbing for each of the packages, seven through 10. I am asking this evening that we award the four plumbing services contracts, number seven through 10, to the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, Dependable Plumbing of Albemarle.
Okay, thank you very much for that excellent explanation. Do we have any questions of Ms. Davis? Hearing no questions, what's the pleasure of the Board?
I move we accept.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner McIntyre. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, then, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that, those contracts are approved. Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is a matter from the Tax Administration Office. Our presenter is Malia Miller, our Tax Administrator.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to report to you the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that have become a lien on real property. As of February 6th, 2012, the total amount of unpaid real property taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on real property amount to $2,355,813. Per statute, I request that the Commissioners order that these tax liens be advertised. They will be advertised in April of 2012. The stated amount will be reduced as the Collections Office continues to accept payments. Second item that I'm here to request, Sammy Estridge Jr., Board of Equalization and Review member, be appointed as Chairman of the Board of Equalization and Review. Mr. Estridge has previously served as Chairman and is willing to serve again as Chairman of the 2012 Board of Equalization and Review.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there, we'll first of all, of course, deal with the question of the order to advertise the tax liens. Do Commissioners have comments or questions of Ms. Miller?
I just had a question. How many different property owners is this? What's the number for this $2,350?
It's a little over 4,000, and these are real property taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion at this time? And our understanding is, I believe, that as these are paid, they can avoid being on the advertised list, that what we're doing tonight is approving the order to advertise, but anyone who comes in and pays until the advertisement is posted will be taken from the list. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're saying advertised in April. Do you know when that cutoff might occur roughly?
The cutoff should be towards the end of March.
Towards the end of March, okay.
And it will be advertised in the local newspaper.
Right.
Well, that just brings up another question. So there's, there is a fee if you don't pay by the deadline, and it's published, there is an additional fee for that advertisement.
There is an additional, yes, yes, ma'am. There is an additional fee just for the advertisement.
Thank you.
Okay, good information. Are there other questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion on the request to issue an order to advertise tax liens.
I'll make that motion.
Here we have a motion from Commissioner Morton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lauter. Any other discussion about this? Hearing none, I would ask that if you're, all in favor of this action, this motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same sign. So that order is to be issued then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on the second item now, we have a request to name the Chairman of the Board of Equalization and Review, and Sammy Estridge Jr. has been proposed. Are there any questions about this at this time that you either need to ask Ms. Miller or any comments that you'd like to make?
I don't have a question about the chairmanship. Just how many members are on the Board?
Five.
Five.
Yes, sir.
And who are they at this time?
Martha Cranford, Vicki Long, Mr. Estridge, Richard Cosgrove, and...
I'm sorry. I couldn't remember.
There's one extra one that, Jerry Burleson.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And we actually, I believe, at our last meeting, appointed Mr. Burleson and Ms. Long and Ms. Cranford.
Correct.
That's correct. All right. Any other questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the Board?
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Sam Estridge Jr. Chairman to the Board of Equalization and Review.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lauter and a second by Commissioner Dennis to appoint Mr. Estridge as Chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we would like to hear from Dennis Joyner, our Health Department Director. I think he's got a couple lines he'd like to speak with us about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. I have two items I wanted to cover with you. The first one is, let me pull it up here. Here we go. The first item that I wanted to talk a little bit about is our 2011... Here, here we go. The first item that I wanted to talk a little bit about is our two thousand and eleven Community Health Assessment that we have just completed. Every four years, the Stanley County Health Department does a full, comprehensive Community Health Assessment. This is a requirement by state, by, by the state, every four years. We do analysis every, every, every year to some extent, and every four years, we do a more thorough analysis that looks at survey results as well as statistics and further analysis. This year, the process occurred beginning in January of two thousand and eleven, and it went through March thirty-first in terms of the survey portion of the Community Health Assessment. This was done through online and paper surveys, and I'm pleased to say that we received over eleven hundred completed surveys for this assessment, which is a sizable amount to receive from a survey of this kind of, of this size. The demographics aligned very, very closely with the U.S. Census for two thousand and ten. Ironically, they were almost identical racially and ethnically to the population base of the census, which is nice to know because we're getting representative data in the responses. It was substantially more females than males completing the survey, and I think part of that's us guys don't like dealing with surveys too much. So I'm generalizing there, but that's not uncommon from, in terms of survey research. The different components of the survey included quality of life statements, health concerns. We also asked about emergency preparedness, community health issues, personal health care issues, barriers to health services, and Stanley County priority issues. In terms of quality of life statements, and I will say that I'm going to run through this pretty quickly, and there's a two hundred and fifty-some-odd-page document on the website that y'all can all read after, this evening, before you go to bed if you'd like to get further details, but I'm going to run through this fairly quickly. In terms of quality of life, most people, as you, I think, all would attest, that live here like living in Stanley County. They think it's a great place to raise children, great place to grow older, a great place to obtain health care, safe place to live, and they do point out lack of employment opportunities. Some of the overall health concerns that were identified are not overly surprising. Tobacco, obesity, and illegal drug use or substance abuse were the top three ones that were in terms of health concerns. This is a rather involved survey here, but this kind of ranks the top twenty-one leading health concerns that people saw as a major problem. There you see tobacco and obesity essentially neck and neck at one and two. Drug use, cancer, diabetes, heart disease, teen pregnancy, lack of physical activity, alcohol abuse, and stroke and STDs sort of round out essentially, well, the top eleven viewed as major concerns. If you look at the, the actual mortality data for two thousand and nine, at the time this was done, that was the latest data that we had. The leading causes of death in Stanley County were heart disease, cancer, cancer, all sites was the first, and then the third, or the first type of cancer leading cause. And then lung cancer was the third, and then followed by cerebrovascular disease or stroke, and then chronic lower respiratory disease. Those, that's things such as chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and other respiratory type diseases. Again, this is a little bit of a busy slide, but this looks at a five-year trend of mortality data of the leading causes of death, and this has Stanley County compared to North Carolina. And it's got the, the leading causes of death ranked in order on the left, and here again, heart disease. It's essentially the same slide you saw before, but I did want to point out, the, the items listed in red, unfortunately, are items that we rank higher, and in some cases significantly higher than the state average. Things such as heart disease, cancer are fairly high. Flu and pneumonia, we are, are high, so I'm glad all of y'all got your flu shot this year. Another plug for that. Motor vehicle injuries and suicide is another concern for us because we are significantly higher. And I will point out, this is a five-year trend, so this is not like just one year where there's a blip that you may go up because you can have wide variation each year. This is a five-year trend. So we've got a lot to, to work on in Stanley County, obviously. Getting back to the survey, there were issues around the community overall, how people felt, not so much just health issues, but just broader community issues, and some of them are not things that you would find too surprising. Obviously, with the economy, the way it's been, unemployment and underemployment were obviously head and shoulders leading the biggest concern overall in terms of community issues. Lack of or inadequate health insurance is another one. That goes kind of part and parcel with employment because so much of the insurance is provided through employer-based programs. Child abuse, both physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, was another top concern. Crime, and in crime, we're defining this particular portion of crime as theft and robbery, and lack of recycling, although I will say that this was done back in January, and I will say, over the past year, there was quite a bit of effort going on across Stanley County with many municipalities to increase recycling. So I would, I would think that perhaps if we did this survey now, we might get a little bit of a different response there to lack of recycling. One of the things that we wanted to find out about was emergency preparedness. Are people, how do people communicate what their concerns would be in the event that there was a mass event in which we need to evacuate or else provide information to the general public? The general public, nothing as a surprise, TV was the main source of getting information. That's sort of understood to some extent. Most families communicate via cell phones, which sort of tells us a little bit of what we already know. I think everybody's got a cellphone now. And not too surprising as well, we asked the question, you know, are there reasons why you would not evacuate? And if so, why? And the big issue was the concern about family members. Not too surprising overall. In terms of personal health care, this, in certain terms of surveys, responses, majority of people get their health information from their doctor or their physician's nurse, which is not unusual. Most people get their health care from a doctor's office here. That's not unusual as well. The majority had some type of insurance, whether that's private Medicare or Medicaid. There was a bit of a disproportionate response in terms of dietary habits by age and race. The older you were, it seemed like they tended to report having little healthier diets. Minorities tended to report having a little poorer dietary responses to some of the survey information. In terms of screenings, most said they had received a blood pressure screening or cholesterol check within the past year. So that was good news. It was a kind of a cue for us to see are people actually getting certain recommended screenings each year. In terms of barriers to health care, there were approximately seventy-five percent who had insurance. So that sounds like a high number, and it is a high number, but I want to point out that that means there's twenty-five percent that do not have health insurance, or stated that they did not have health insurance. And that obviously is a big concern and a costly one for those of us who need to take care of those folks. Most knew where to access health care, and they knew something about mental health services in general, which is a concern for many of us about whether or not people know where to go for certain services, and that was good to know as well. If you want to read more about this report, including further analysis, we've got it posted on the website and would certainly encourage you to do that. One of the big reasons we do this each year and every four years in terms of the thorough Community Health Assessment is to try to get a little bit of a marker of what, how we're doing in terms of the health status in Stanley County. Many, many organizations use this data to go after grants, and we will do the same thing to try to leverage this information for the future as well. We'll be moving forward over the next six months, looking at developing strategic efforts to try to address some of the priority health concerns that have been, that have been identified in the document. And this sort of leads up to an invitation. I'd like to invite all of y'all to an event. Every year, for the last couple of years, we've held the Stanley County Health Expo as an opportunity to raise awareness in the community about certain health issues. This year, the topic is good health, good business for a greater Stanley County. It's a little bit different topic than we have in the past. Dr. David Chinowitz is going to be joining us. He's an expert in the area of community health and the economy. And we're promoting this among the chamber members, business community, because I think it's important that folks understand the link between a healthy community and good business and the economy in and of itself. So I would encourage y'all to, to try to participate in that event if, if you can. Any general questions, I'd be happy to try to respond.
Thank you so much for this information that you provided. I, I think that one of the things that you said at the end is important, and I think that I've heard this board talk about that on, on a, on a number of occasions, that if we're going to have good education in Stanley County, and if we're going to reach the place we want to be for economic development, health plays an important part with that. I hear lots of times about economic development that it's important that people pass their screenings, and, and then when they're at work, that they show up for work, and they can't be out sick lots of times. So I hear what you're saying between the lines. I certainly would encourage you to speak more about that as, as you get opportunity, and I think we will too, to increase in the awareness of these issues because nothing's in a silo. We're all interacting with each other. I know too, that the Health Department does several things. One you've mentioned here, because a lot of the problems that we face are life choice issues. A lot of the illnesses and so forth have to do with exercise. There probably should be a few people lined up behind you right now saying, we're offering this program.
Yeah.
I know the county does a lot of things, and the towns do a lot of things that might help. We have great facilities in Stanley County as well. This is, the beginning of the year is a great time to make some resolutions. I know that I need to do that too, to get out and walk or to exercise to address those issues. So I hope that we'll continue to do that, and you may, you may have a, something you need to push besides the one announcement you have tonight, if you, if you want to say anything else, that now would be a good time to do so.
Well, you don't, I mean, in terms of getting on a soapbox, I'd be happy to, and you've already started giving me a lift up there. I mean, we really are dealing with the biggest killers in Stanley County and North Carolina are, are many, many of the things that we can actually do something about individually. We're dealing, and I left the meeting to come here on Advisory Board for the Energize Program, which is a childhood obesity initiative that the hospital has gotten some funding for. And we were sitting around that table talking about the issue of obesity and how it's sort of the, I kind of hate to use the, the term, but it's kind of the eight-hundred-pound elephant sitting in the room. It's an issue that we've got to deal with. Tobacco has been that for many, many years. It's still the number one preventable cause of illness in, in the nation. If you can reduce it, the cost associated with that in terms of illness, as well as things like absenteeism and other issues, it's just unbelievable. And it's gotten to the point now where, as a society, we just about can't afford to be sick anymore, any more than we have to. And so particularly those areas around obesity and tobacco, those preventable areas, exercise, fitness, and nutrition are things that we really need to embrace, and, and clearly, we want to try to, try to do that. Many of the communities in the, in Stanley County have done an excellent job of expanding exercise opportunities. A lot of municipalities with parks to establish, you know, new parks with walking trails, and they have a lot of pride in that, and we need to commend them and encourage them as they do that because a lot of those are very positive public policy decisions that are being made in our community, and we really need to embrace that.
And I know the partners in health are cooperating with those facilities as well, and appreciate what you're doing along that line. I'd be remiss not to thank the almost twelve hundred people who responded to the survey in Stanley County. I appreciate very much their participation in this. It helps you to make this very fine assessment for us and make this summary tonight. Are there any questions or comments, other comments by board members? Hearing none, I believe, Mr. Joyner, you have another issue that you'd like to speak with us about tonight.
Yes, sir. This one is a, we have a request for a budget amendment for our home health program to increase our expenditure line for professional services that would allow us to adequately contract for our therapy services in the home health program. We currently are at about a twenty percent increase in all of our visits in home health over last year this time. And in order for us to have the, the flexibility to engage those contracts, we need to be able to encumber the amount that we can cover those contracts. Now, at the end of the year, we may not use all this encumbered, but we've got to at least get it in there so that we can provide the necessary service to provide those, those services in the community. So we're requesting that the, the agenda, that the budget be amended, eighty thousand dollars to reflect that.
And my understanding is that these, these funds are, are grant monies or monies that will be additional revenues?
Generated revenues. We'll have offsetting revenues.
Offsetting revenues.
And if, just, home health and dental are both two programs in our department that are self-supporting. And in the event that for some reason the revenues did not come in to offset that, there is more than sufficient fund balance to offset any shortfall that that might occur, but we're hoping that's not the case.
Thanks for the explanation. Are there any questions or comments by board members? Hearing none, what's your, what's your pleasure? We have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lauter. Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, Mr. Joyner. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve. So we have a motion by Commissioner Dennis, with a second by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we're at the place on our agenda tonight for public comment. I did not have anyone sign up. Is there anyone who is interested in making a comment at this time? Please come to the podium and introduce yourself. We remind you that our public comments time is limited to three minutes, and our manager will, will indicate to you when that time is, is approaching.
No problem. Thanks, sir. My name's Dale Warne from Baden. I just got a couple of quick questions. Can you tell me outside, beside the teachers, how many county jobs are vacant at this time for nutrition or being, people being laid off? The number?
I, I'd like for you to repeat your question, and then I'll, I'll give you some way of an answer.
I just want to know, outside of teachers, how many county jobs right now are vacant due to nutrition or being, people being laid off? County jobs.
One thing I actually meant to say as you were coming up is that in the last couple of meetings, we've had a couple of people who have come and asked us questions in this setting. I think it's difficult, difficult for either Commissioners or staff to be able to answer those questions. Sometimes off the top of our heads, it kind of puts us in a situation where we don't know. We'd rather give you the, the best answer. That is something that we would definitely like to get back to you on. I don't think anybody at this time knows exactly what that number is. And so I would just remind you, this is a public comment time. It's not necessarily a question time, but we would certainly welcome any questions at any time, and especially at a time that we can be...
at any time and especially at a time that we can better answer those.
I'll just say, if you put that in writing, we'd be more happy to answer that question, staff. And it's actually a two-part question. One is, how many people have been laid off? And then, and we certainly can provide that over a two or three-year budget cycle. And second piece is how many vacant positions we currently have, budgeted positions where someone has left the organization or, so we, that's actually a two-part question and we'd be more than happy to answer it. Just if you wouldn't mind putting that in writing to us, either via email or have someone write us a letter, we'll be more than happy to respond.
All right, I got one more question. It's a question there, again, you're probably not going to answer it, but was there a raise issue last meeting? Did the county manager get a percentage raise?
I will answer that question because it is a part of our approved minutes tonight. The board did provide an increase in salary to our, our manager and it is, it is reported in our minutes.
And do you count, do I need to call into his office to find out, get a copy of his minutes or that's the best way?
I think that's a good idea.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you for coming up and your comments. Anyone else have a comment tonight in the public comment section? Seeing no one, we'll go to our general comments or announcements by board members and staff. I'm going to start on my left with Commissioner Morton.
No comment.
Commissioner McIntyre?
No comment.
Again, we'll swing all the way over here to Commissioner Dennis.
No comment.
Commissioner Lauter?
Happy Valentine's Day.
And I don't have a comment either. Our county attorney?
No comment, thank you.
And county manager?
No comments, sir, thank you.
Okay. Again, we appreciate the public being here tonight, for those who are here and especially our media. And we will now consider a closed session. We need to go into closed session to consult with the county attorney to discuss APGI's public records lawsuit and matters related to economic development. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So do.
Motion by Commissioner Dennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lauter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're in closed session.